Partners to do a master plan pre-programming, a report about our needs and facilities at the high school. And following that, we went into closed session and discussed the, our superintendent's evaluation. And there was no action taken, other than it's already been approved. And so, we're now back into open session. Then, let's see. Teresa, is she still here?
Yeah, she's over there.
Would you like to meet us in the flag slot, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is my report. I don't have a big, oops, presentation as far as anything on the screen tonight, but I just wanted to say that we have, as I reported last time, a lot of activity going on in the district in our summer school activities, or be it for LAIF, or our special education programs, or our bridge programs. And there are many, many activities going on. But, the kids are out of school, so we need to be very vigilant of that. They're on skateboards, they're on bicycles, and so, we need to be very, very careful in driving their cars, and riding our own bikes, and be very mindful of that, and be aware of the fact that when they get out of school, they're getting out of school, and they're probably in a hurry to get home, so, we need to watch out for that timeframe as well. So, thank you for being vigilant, and I'll move next to Dr. Crop's report.
Good evening, President Russell, esteemed members of the board, and community, and staff here tonight. So, I want to start by saying I sent an email tonight, earlier, actually, later this afternoon, to all of our families and community members about our accomplishments from 1516. But I want to take a second, that it really, none of that work would happen without your visionary leadership, and equally important is the community support that we get, that will be so evident tonight, later in this meeting. So, we're really appreciative that we can do things in Los Alamitos because we have this level of support. Also, for my report, you can see, I wanted to remind everyone that might be watching that we will be posting on social media throughout the summer. And so, a couple highlights, if people would like to follow us on Twitter, we have that little bird icon on our webpage, which is Twitter, and people can follow us there. And then also, I wanted to take a second to talk about our YouTube channel, so hang And so, I wanted to remind everyone that we have a YouTube channel for the district, and so, I'm going to pull this up and really show, some people aren't really aware, or maybe haven't looked at it. And as you can see, we have a lot of videos, and they're different, and they highlight all of our schools, K-12, and many of our programs. And so, I'm going to choose one, it's one song, and I just like it, so I thought we'd have one song this evening. Here we go.
I mean, they have their own show choir, their student section's crazy, they even...
Hey, look!
What?
So you think we're just a school? We're more than that and super cool. That we'd let you know, so we'll let you know, we're Los Alamos. Igniting possibilities for all the hardest and athletes. Went in right and left, taking CIF, man, that's Los Alamos, so Los Alamos.
Oh, oh, we got every club here, get connected all year, oh, oh. On our way to college, so, see you at the choir show.
We just want to bring the crowd. We just want to all get loud. We just want to know, are you ready to? Cause there's no one like Los Alamos, no one like us now. We got robotics, yes we do, and electronics that we use to be soaking up our minds, learning all the time. Man, that's Los Alamos, this is Los Alamos.
Oh, oh, we got every club here, get connected all year, oh, oh. On our way to college, so, see you at the choir show. We just want to bring the crowd. We just want to all get loud. We just want to know, are you ready to? Cause there's no one like Los Alamos, no one like us now. We just have to bring the crowd. We just need to all get loud. We just got to know, are you ready to? Cause there's no one like us now, no one like us now, Los Alamos.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to show that, there's tons of these videos, there really are, probably, I don't even know, I won't, I don't want to guess the number, but there's a lot, and so, we invite people to take a look at our YouTube channel, they're fun, and our younger kids love the songs, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, now we have, Dr. Michael Thistler is going to introduce our adult transition partners' special recognition.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President Russell, and esteemed members of the board, Dr. Crop, executive cabinet, community members. My name is Michael Keller, and I'm the Director of Special Education for Los Alamitos Unified School District. And tonight, it's my pleasure to do a couple recognitions for a program that we love, and has grown into an amazing program for adult students with, with moderate to severe disabilities. We serve students that are 18 all the way up to 22 years of age, students who may not be earning a traditional diploma, but students who really require a lot of specialized training to be as independent as possible when they become adults and transition into lives after school. So, I'd like to bring up a couple of our awesome teachers that run the program, and really developed it into an amazing place. And tonight, the purpose of our, of our recognitions is to recognize our business partners that we have, because the real-life work experience that our students have really make it so that they can be contributing members of our community, and be as independent as possible. So, I'd like to bring up Mrs. Julie Demuth and Mrs. Michelle Kelly, come on up. And we'll be starting with a recognition of the City of Los Alamitos for their Senior Serve Meals on Wheels program with Mrs., I'm sorry, Miss, it's Emily Jingress, come on up.
Thank you for having us here this evening, and Emily, we just want to say, the work that you guys provide for our students is just invaluable, you know, there's different, we have worked with them in different roles, different types of jobs, working with the Senior Serve Program, working with Meals on Wheels, helping to prepare the meals and serve the meals for the seniors, and the lunch program at the community center, and it's just been wonderful working with you, because again, you're so flexible with looking at the needs of our different students, and coming up with different opportunities for them, again, to just learn to be as successful as possible in a work setting, and in their own community, which is really important, so, thank you very much.
On behalf of the City of Los Alamitos, I want to thank Julie and Michael, thank you very much. This was, I think, and the timing was right for this, we had a need for volunteers to provide Meals on Wheels to residents of Rossmore and Los Alamitos. We had four participants at that time. I had been putting articles out in the paper, news releases, trying to get the word out there that we needed volunteers, Julie contacted me, found a role for Lisa Allen and Haley specifically, to provide the Meals on Wheels. That program has grown, we've more than doubled our numbers, so we're now at nine deliveries. So, we still are in need of more volunteers, but this has really helped fill that role and that void, and Haley and Lisa have been wonderful in that program, as well as some of the other instructors and aides. We really appreciate your support, and the high school's support, and thank you very much on behalf of the City of Los Alamitos.
And next, we'd like to invite up Ms. Teresa Murphy, our Executive Director of Precious Life Shelter.
So again, I'm sorry, I'm not used to talking into a microphone, I'm used to talking out to students, and you're behind me. But basically, Precious Life, we've been partnered with probably for the last year and a half to two years, and it was really just reaching out kind of on the fly to you guys, and we had worked with some other shelter, and with Grateful Hearts, basically, and looking for similar types of opportunities, and Precious Life has been wonderful. Again, we have students that work in the thrift shop there specifically, and again, we have students of varying disabilities that are there, and they've been wonderful, just looking at, you know, thinking outside the box, and what are some different meaningful roles and responsibilities that our students can have there. So, again, it's just been wonderful, and we appreciate you working with us, so, thank you.
I'd just like to thank the district for allowing Precious Life to partner with students and their mentors. That's a wonderful opportunity for our volunteers and for our residents to be able to see how the community can partner together. And the young people who have worked at the shop, whether it's sorting, or pricing, or learning to hang, and, and set up displays, it gives them a real opportunity to learn some retail experience, and then go out into the real world and find out how they can have a job. And it's exciting, because our residents also need that same partnership, and they see people coming from the school district, and it encourages them to go back and finish their own education, and we like to partner with the district in that as well. So, I thank you, and I appreciate all that you've done in the community to help us be a partner.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Keller. Then we, we take about a 10-minute recess at this time. Are we going to take pictures?
Yes.
Okay, are there cookies?
Yes.
Okay, and they're out in the lobby, so, we'll take them, don't leave, we have to take pictures of you.
Take your picture.
Thank you.
They're individuals. Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order, I, I don't have any slips for staff participation, so we'll move on to our information presentations of the textbook. Dr. Crop.
So, thank you, Madam President, members of the board and the community. So, our first item is World War II is short history, so this is for our military history class at Los Alamitos High School, and it's a presentation, it'll be on display for 30 days.
Okay, and then the next one is a presentation of supplemental materials.
Yeah, I'm really excited about that, that's for our new band director, Mr. Padilla, is requesting these materials for orchestra students and for strings, and so, both of those are for the high school instrumental music program. And again, they're on presentation, and will be on display for 30 days.
Okay, thank you very much. And so, now we're on to the consent item, and I just have one thing that we just need to totally take off, and that's Item G, it was put there in error.
I will move, we do that.
I'm sorry, it'll be A through A, F and H through N.
Okay, now I can move that.
Okay.
And I'll second.
All right, properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of those items, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion to carries. By the way, I forgot to mention that consent items are those items that are usual, and not out of the ordinary, and I just proved as one item. We're next to action, which is approval of the Local Control and Accountability Plan. Dr. Crop, again.
Thank you. So, tonight, we have before you a slightly revised LCAP that we're seeking board approval, and so, there are some highlighted changes before you. They, actually, it includes a few metrics that were left out of the LCAP that was presented to the board last month. For example, to measure our English learners, we do use our CELT scores, so that we can monitor that we continue to make progress. And we also talked about measuring our chronic absenteeism, because you know it's very important that students come to school, and it's just a different way to measure, and they have slightly different criteria.
Okay, the motion would, in order to approve that amend, amendment?
I'll go.
Excuse me, I'll so move with approval.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the items, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for zero. Then we're on to approval of a warrants, Deputy Meyer.
Nothing unusual, just as presented tonight.
Okay, thank you, motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants as presented.
I'll second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of warrants, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for zero. And we're on to acceptance of donations. And if you're having...
I'll move approval as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
And thanking to our generous community for all their support. This is our first round in the fiscal year, and so, we're just starting off, 43, over, almost forty, $44,000, lacking 90 cents.
Yeah.
Okay, so a motion would be in order to, you've already made it, so, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the donations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for zero. And we're on to our classified and certificated personnel report. Dr. Pulver.
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board, the personnel reports reflect the actions since the last board meeting, recommend approval as submitted.
I'll make a motion that we approve the classified and certificated personnel reports.
Okay. Second? Properly moved and seconded, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for zero. And we're now on to the part of our workshop that we were going to have earlier, but we're going to have now. Dr. Crop?
We're not going to do communication first?
Well, we'll do it after.
Okay.
So, thank you, Madam President. So, we have Joy Tatarca here today, from TBWB, and to talk to us about the steps that are involved before a board should, or could, or would decide to put a bond measure on the ballot. So, we've asked Joy to come forward and talk to us further steps, thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Last time I was here, I presented a timeline slide that showed some of the various steps that you could take as you moved forward, deciding whether you would look at a bond measure, and those steps would actually be applicable, whether you decided on something this year, in this November, or whether you looked ahead to 2018. So, I just thought it would be helpful to go through that review, and we could discuss if you have any questions about things that you might need to do for this year, or what your schedule would be like if you pursued this year, or how that schedule might be expanded if you look forward to the future. Did you, did we want to put the slides up, or are they to go up on the screen?
John, if you could get those up?
And if you could speak a little more into the mic.
I can, yes.
Thank you.
I think Jeremy should have those.
Well, we're waiting for that, can I ask you just a couple of general questions?
Absolutely.
So, and just to give you a little background, I chaired the bond last time we did it, but I was not on the board, and so, it's a very different perspective.
Absolutely.
To come from, and so, what is, have you worked with districts that have failed bonds in the past, and how, how do they come, how would they come back from that? And how does that usually perceived by the public?
So, I...
I know, that's a hard question for you to ask, but have you seen that in the big general picture?
Yeah, definitely, I've seen that in the big general picture. I've worked with districts, the funny part about the question is, is that I haven't worked with a district that when I, and this is not speaking to me, I just haven't had a district fail yet, in the five years I've been doing this.
That's awesome.
It happens, it happens, district, I mean, you know, probably the biggest time that we saw a lot of school bonds not passing was 2010, and you know, that was in the middle of the recession, there was a lot of uncertainty, and there was a big insurgence of the Tea Party, and, excuse me, they had a big impact on school bond elections in California, and so, there were several that failed, and that is, in recent history, some of the most memorable school bonds that failed. And there were school districts that we worked with after that, and I would say, perhaps, the biggest hardship, it's not necessarily the community outward, it is the people who are putting the time in. Sometimes, when I have seen failed school bonds, what happened is, the district took off perhaps more than the community was comfortable with. So, perhaps their bond amount was too much, or the projects were bigger than what the community had in mind. And some of the planning that went into going back to, to, you know, do it again, we weren't successful the second time, just because, you know, whatever, I was working for them, or something else. It usually was that they took the time to really think about, be thoughtful about, you know, how are we going to go about this? Was it that the bond was too big before? Was it that, you know, are the things that we wanted were not aligned with what our community thought we needed? And after those adjustments were made, the districts were successful. The biggest hardship, I think, on a district going through that, is the volunteers who are involved in the effort. It takes a lot of energy from people, you know, it's, it is an 88-day, yeah, an 88-day race, right? From the time it's put on the ballot to Election Day, and a lot of people put a lot of their hard work, and heart, and energy into it, and I think that is the hardest thing to recover from when you have a loss, is just getting geared back up again, and finding people that want to take up.
Great, thank you very much. I really appreciate that answer.
So, again, this is, this is the timeline, and the timeline looks about the same regardless whether we look at this year, or whether we look at the future. As you know, you've completed the feasibility study, it did show that the community is very supportive of the school district, the community would likely be supportive of a potential bond measure if it were on the ballot this year. You are at that point right now, that red light, green light, where you're taking in information, you're trying to decide what is the best process to move forward, regardless of whether you look at this year, or whether you look at next, in 2018, which would be when the district would have your next opportunity, because it's the next regularly scheduled election in your community, you would still need to work on doing that building consensus, which is the outreach that you would do, and you might think of, you know, some of the things that we even talked about doing this summer, and then you could also do it over next year, if you were looking in the future, is town hall meetings, doing outreach both internally with all of the staff, all of your parents, but also doing a lot of that external outreach to service clubs, and other key communicators in the community, elected officials, other people who are influencers. You would also, you know, look at writing your ballot resolution, that would include the project list, all the projects that you'd want to be sure that were included in that resolution, you know, thinking about the 75 words. We obviously tested 75 words in the voter survey that people took, that you saw last time, but maybe there's some refinements that could be made to that, that would, you know, better reflect both the things that you wanted to do, and the things that the community wanted to see done. And then, you know, for this year, the board would have to vote by July, August 12th. So, if you were considering this year, you have a couple board meetings coming up, I believe the dates I have are July 19th and August 2nd. So, for example, if you were to consider this year, July 19th, you would probably want to see some financing scenarios, you'd want to have an opportunity to look at what the resolution might be consisting of, and then also, whatever the project list might include. You would then have an opportunity to make any refinements, and you could come back on August 2nd and vote, and still have time before the August 12th deadline to place the measure on the ballot. So, that would be one option of going forward. Once the board votes, it would go to that independent advocacy campaign, and then that's when they, you know, the community members and everyone would take up the 88-day sprint. This sort of is just another way of looking at it, and again, it just kind of goes through what I just said. If you were however to consider waiting and going at a later time, really what you would do is you would just expand that timeline over this next year. So, perhaps this fall, we would begin with some communications to the community, maybe send some informational mail home to the community, start engaging parents, then maybe take a break off over the holidays, and come back in 2017, and pick up again on a lot of that consensus building and outreach to the community, so that when 2018 came around, you might have an opportunity in June or November. Sometimes it makes sense to look at a small turnout election like June. Now, the main differences, I just think it's important that you know, the main differences between this November, and if you looked forward to 2018, is the amount of people who will be voting. You will have far more people voting this November than you will have in 2018, those are just the way it breaks out, just the way engagement is in voting elections. So, I just wanted to see if you had any questions about the timeline, or if there's anything else that I could answer about the process.
I don't know if you can answer this question, but I have heard that there could be up to 19 propositions on our ballot, we have presidential, we'll have citywide, we'll have school board, we'll have, who knows what else, does, can you make any comment on voter fatigue?
There will be about 19, we know that have qualified for the ballot, it will be a long ballot. And there is sometimes voter fatigue, that is a real thing. People go in, although there is a, you know, historic number of people who will be voting in this November's election, some people will, you know, choose not to vote on things that are in the middle of the ballot, because it just gets long, and they don't know all the issues, so they don't know how to vote. That really does mean that it's important that if the board went forward, the advantage that you have is that your item would be probably very near the back of the ballot, if not the very last thing. So, communicating that to people, that even if, you know, as you're going through the ballot, there's many things to decide, and if you're not interested in voting on them, you don't have to, but flip your ballot over, there's something important about our local schools on the back, and vote on that. And we've actually seen a lot of success, where we have a very engaged, independent campaign group, and we use that message, you know, you see that, there's always going to be drop-off, but people come back for their local issues, even though they may drop off in the middle.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, now, we'll go back to our communication, and I want to start with Mrs. Hill.
I don't have a great deal to communicate, I did, I was able to go to the Orange County Department of Ed for the transfer of territory, I think I got this right, transfer of territory meeting, and Mrs. Russell did a phenomenal job, and we had some really good questions, and I was very pleased with, with the outcome, and so, I think it was worth staff, certainly worth staff's effort, and Deputy Superintendent Meyer was just phenomenal with her facts there, yeah, you can't argue with them, so, but I appreciate being able to be part of it, and being able to be heard.
Okay, Mr. Boyer.
You know, I, I guess I should turn my mic on, the one thing I like to do at the summertime is drive around our sites, and although the kids are out, there's a lot of work going on at our sites, and so, especially over at Oak, I see they're working really hard on getting the grass in place, and getting things together, and so, and, you know, just the, you know, all the things we have to do, the bushes have to be trimmed, the trees have to be trimmed, there's the general maintenance, and so, I appreciate that, because things do not, and the custodians are now doing all the work they have, that they can't, that they can do, since students are not in class, so, I do appreciate that they're getting those things done, and so, it's not a quiet time, or maybe it is a quiet time, but it's a busy time for a lot of our classified employees, and I appreciate what they're doing. And that'll, that'll do me.
Okay.
Right, okay, I was able to attend our meeting with the City of Seal Beach, we regularly meet with the City of Seal Beach, and with the City of Los Alamitos, Mrs. Russell and I meet with the City of Seal Beach, and Mrs. Hill and Mr. Boyer meet with the City of Los Alamitos, with other, you know, people within the district, and from, within the cities, and it's just really good to keep touch, we're such a small community, to make sure we're all on the same page. I was also at the county commission meeting on redistricting, and I was very happy the way it came out. I was also at the county commission meeting non-registering, and I was very happy the way it came out. Had some interesting comments from other board members, along the line of, what was the real reason behind this? But anyway, which is a question I actually did ask. I was also able to attend the town hall meeting at McGaw Elementary School that Dr. Pulver held. As probably most people are aware, that Dr. Gargis, our principal from McGaw, has received another job, a promotion for him, in towards school district where he lives, and we're very happy for his good luck, and so now we're looking for our good luck, and we were getting feedback from our community about what type of a principal they would like to have at McGaw, and that's always really interesting. And then I was also able to attend a retirement party for a worker from the Orange County Department of Ed, Ellen Sheridan. She had, she's one of the chief administrators there, and she was retiring. She's been the support for the Orange County School Boards Association, and the Orange County School Boards Association basically gets together, comes up with these ideas, and then we go tell the Department of Ed to go do them. And so basically, it means Ellen has to figure out how to get these, this herd of cats going towards one area, what our final decision is, implement them, and she always would do it with incredible graciousness, speed, professionalism, and I, and I, since I had been on that board for several years, I just really wanted to go and to thank her, and she was also involved in our Friday Nights Lights, and Inside the Outdoors, and a bunch of other things, and she was just ready to move on to a next, next step in her life, and we wished her all the best, and I was glad to see a large number of people who attended that, and that's it.
Well, you did the things I did.
I know.
Except I didn't go to retirement, but I, the Seal Beach City Working Group, that has always been such, they, they give us such great input, and been great partners with us, and support us in all our efforts, and I think one of the interesting things that they're still looking, I think you saw in week in review, at the, the pool site, they really would like to have it on the Navy base, it's just, you know, government issues are kind of slow and moving, so hopefully, we'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed, but they wanted to know if our site was still in, in, in operation, that, that would be considered if they couldn't get it there, and we said, of course, we'd work with them to do whatever we can. And then I went to the property transfer hearing, as Mrs. Hill did, and Mrs. Meyer, and, and of course, Meg was on, Dr. Pulver was there, Meg was on the, the committee, and so I, I would like to thank our community members that came, Mr. Locke and Jody Rubinson, Teresa Blankenstein. I mean, it's important to have community support when you're facing an issue such as this, so I just wanted to thank them, and I, I really liked the outcome, thank you for your vote, Meg.
Well, yeah, it was, it was...
It was a hard decision, right?
No, it was, it was, no, it was, it was a weighted decision, and it's, the facts were presented, and it did not make sense, it did not meet the criteria.
That's right, so, I originally thought that they would vote on each one, and then, you know, but they said if any one...
Yes.
Was voted against that, it would, the whole thing would go down.
The whole thing would go down.
And so, it, it was very interesting, and I also had the same thought, which was never brought up, as to really what was the real reason, but I think that Mrs. Meyer talked to that one time when we had a, a, a workshop on that issue. So, anyway, that was good news, and that's about all I have to say. So, I guess most into adjourn, we don't have anything else, no, closed session?
Aye, so move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, we are adjourned, November 13th for my special board meeting.